Calling to your order, the July 3rd, 2024 City Council Meeting. Please rise and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. The clerk will now call the roll.
Councilmember Grummer?
Here.
Councilmember Hood?
Here.
Councilmember Luke?
Here.
Councilmember Luther?
Here.
Councilmember Norris?
Here.
Councilmember Patel?
Here.
Councilmember Sato?
Here.
Councilmember Westy?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. All eight council members are here. The next item on the agenda is Agenda Approval. Do I have a motion?
I move to amend the agenda by tabling the appeal for solar-
Move approval first.
Oh, excuse me.
Move approval.
You're not going to make the amendment first.
Okay.
Motion for Agenda Approval first.
Okay. Thank you.
First? Second?
Yes.
Okay. The Agenda Approval is made by, motion made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Sato. Now, all in favor?
No, now there are any changes.
No.
Any, okay, any amendments?
I move to amend the agenda by tabling the appeal for solar panels at 11687 Donny Cave Lane and Bill Number 6646, Bill Number 6647, and Bill Number 6648.
Second?
Okay, motions made to table-
Should we do this one at a time?
Would you repeat that, please? Can we keep hold of that?
Sure.
Motions made to table the solar panel?
Bill Number what?
Request. It's appeal, it's an appeal for solar panels. And then also Bills Number 46, 6446, 6447, and 6448. That's the amendment. Any others?
Second.
I already seconded.
Okay. Motions made by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. All in favor of the approved agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I see none. Your agenda for tonight?
I moved, I moved to-
Oh, on the amendment, okay.
I moved to approve the agenda as amendment.
Second.
Okay, motion made to approve the amended agenda by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I see none. The agenda amended is approved for tonight's meeting. Public comments, I only see two here. First, I want to tell you about the guidelines. Statements shall be confined to business of the city that's present on the agenda tonight. Statements shall not contain offensive words. No person may make any derogatory or inflammatory statements about any other person or make any political statement or speech. Each person may speak for three minutes. Okay, tonight, we have Mr. Mike Pinson. Please state your name and address to the city clerk.
Mike Pinson, 11420 Old St. Charles Road. You have on the agenda tonight for a new bill concerning the sign at McKelby Park. I'd like to draw attention to that, if I could, in that of the corner of Bridgeton, you only get about 1% of the residents passing by that sign and spend $44,000 for that, for that sign. And where I'm at, today, I'm sitting at the corner of Fifi and St. Charles Rock Road. And I look around, Fifi Baptist Church, there's Walgreens, there's Brannicky Hardware, and there's Miss Paul Church, all friendly people to the city of Bridgeton. And I'm thinking, wow, what a great location that would be. It's in the heart of Bridgeton and someplace where it could be seen. And I would like to see the Bridgeton look into this, rather than being only visible with 1% of the residents. Thank you.
Okay. We'll take your comments under advisement. Thank you. Next person is Kathy Kerver from the Historical Commission. Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Kathy Kerver of the Bridgeton Historical Commission. And Judy Meyer is with me also. She's going to say a few words, too. The Bridgeton Historical Commission has been doing video interviews of Bridgeton residents for some time, since 2011. And we do have a list of over 70 people that have been interviewed. And Judy has actually done the interviews. We've got the list back on the table over there. And we are going to have a showing of the interview that Judy did with Mayor Briggs back in 2015, when he was, after he was just first elected as mayor. So I'd like to have Judy explain to you what the process is, because we'd like to have anyone else who's interested in being interviewed, you know, contact us, and we could take care of that.
Judy, please state your name and address to the city clerk.
Judy Meyer. I live at 12813 Spanish Village Drive. And like Kathy said, I was asked by Jean, who was our chairman at the time, if I would work with Joe Turner to do these interviews. And I said yes. I had no idea what to do, how to do it, or whatever. And I was just kind of going by whatever I thought would be interesting and pertinent. And actually, Jenny Turner's father, Ed Banker, although he was deceased, and it's a shame, we never had a chance to interview him, but he had a phone book. And through his contacts, it opened up a lot of doors for Joe and I to meet people and go into their homes and talk to them. And we learned so much about the history of Bridgeton. And there were some common threads that we would ask people about, like Northwest Plaza, that was always a big one, their memorances of that. And of course, the, the, you know, not the entertainment, but you know, what's it called? Oh, I'll come back to that one. Anyway, if you look on your list of people, I'm sure you'll recognize a lot of names, maybe some of your neighbors, some of your friends. Unfortunately, a lot of these people aren't with us anymore. So it's that much more important that we have their memorances on videotape. And the people are looking good when we talk to them, you know? And it's a pleasure to be able to go back and see them. We actually interviewed three of our mayors. We interviewed Mayor Conrad Bowers and his wife, and Mayor Alf Stoff and his wife. And if you don't know, Alf Stoff wasn't even from Bridgeton. He wasn't even from the United States. He came from a different country altogether, which I found fascinating. And I also learned from our interviews that we had a volunteer fire department here in Bridgeton. So I learned so much from them. And I hope that we will start doing our interviews again. And if you know someone that has been a longtime Bridgeton resident, you yourself, a family member, please, please volunteer to let us interview you. Thank you.
And the videos are on YouTube at BridgetonHistorical7898. It's on the handout that we have back at the table. So you're all invited to come and view Mayor Briggs's interview next Tuesday night at the Ruck Center at 6:30. And I hope y'all can come. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Judy. Kathy, I'd like to ask you, I've saved enough for council up here. If you want to put these on the table back there for the residents to take a look at? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motions made by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther, to approve the minutes from June the 19th. Any changes, friendly amendments? I see none. All in favor of tonight's agenda, I mean, of the minutes from June 19th, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I see none. The minutes for June 19th, 2024 are approved.
Mayor, I'm going to abstain from that vote.
Okay, you're abstaining?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilmember Westy abstains, since he wasn't here for that councilman. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, I'm going to call forward the chief, Mark Masadi. And he wants to introduce our Animal Control Officer, Joel Armstead, and I believe there's a presentation for him. Thank you.
Sloppy up here tonight. Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm pleased, I am very pleased to inform you of a significant achievement by our Animal Control Officer, Joel Armstead. As you're aware, Joel patrols both our great city of Bridgeton and the city of Maryland Heights for animal control. And in June of this year, Joel, who manages our animal shelter, received this recognition from the Best Friends Animal Society for achieving a remarkable save rate of over 90% in 2023. Despite the intake of 89 pets at our shelter last year, this accomplishment positions our city among the nation's leaders in animal welfare. Best Friends Animal Society is committed to ending shelter euthanasia by 2025. And they recognized and celebrated the achievement on this, our part, from a national standpoint. I want to do extend my heartfelt congratulations to Joel. His dedication and hard work make him a valuable asset to our city and such a great member of our team. Joel, congratulations.
Joel, would you like to say any words?
Thank you, everyone, for, thank you, chief, for such kind words. As I said, when I received this award, I cannot take this solely as a personal endeavor. It's a community award. It just goes to show that with the cooperation from residents, local shelters, local rescues, and other animal control agencies that I've worked with, it's a group effort, and this is a group award. I couldn't, I cannot take all kudos for this award myself. I know how hard it is, being an individual animal control officer in one city, let alone two. So without the help from the community, from other animal control agencies, from our local rescues, volunteers, this could not have been achieved. As the chief said, in 2023, we had a total of 89 animals that were in tape, that were housed in our pound. That number is split between Bridgeton and Maryland Heights. That number breaks down basically 74 dogs and 15 cats. I'm happy to say that out of those numbers, 44 of those animals returned home to their families. The other 45 were vetted and transferred to the Animal Protection Agency, who is now running adoptions for St. Louis County. And I found out today that all but two were adopted. So that in itself is an accomplishment. If we could continue on this path, I think we can help Best Friends reach that goal of no kill in 2025. We just have to continue to chip away at the block. It's a block. And we're just putting, or as they say, it's one small drop in the bucket. But I believe that we will fill that bucket up before I call it quits. So thank you once again, everyone. I appreciate all your help. I'm here if anyone ever needs me for anything. I'm just a phone call away. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel.
All right, next item on the agenda, we have consideration of resolutions, but we have none. So we're going to move forward to aye, which is the recess for public hearing. So we're going to have a public hearing now for a special use permit. And I'd like to call forward Mr. Zach Greitens, our Planning and Zoning Officer. For the court reporter, please raise your right hand. State after me. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
State your name and address to the court reporter, please.
Zach Greitens. I'm the Planning and Zoning Officer with the City of Bridgeton, 12355 Natural Bridge Road, Bridgeton, Missouri, 63044.
Okay, proceed.
Thank you. This item, this is Application 24-PZ-04. This is a special use permit request. The request is to allow an indoor pickleball and badminton facility at 11333 Blake Drive. The property is located in the B2 Community Business District. This application was in front of the Planning Commission at their June 10th meeting, and it was approved unanimously at that meeting with conditions, at which time a public hearing was also held as required. A little bit of information on the property before we get into some of the other details. The subject site, 11333 Blake Drive. The property is just over 10 acres. It is a former retail location. Everyone knows this was the former weekends-only building. The site itself, the building is approximately 110,000 square feet, set a little bit further back from Blake Drive. It has frontage on Fifi Road, Blake Drive, and Lindbergh Boulevard. Access to the site provided with one curb cut entrance on, from Blake Drive, and then two from Fifi Road, the rear one on the northwestern portion of the site that provides access to docks for the building. Regarding surrounding land use, there's single-family dwellings located to the west along Fifi Road. To the north is a mix of institutional and temporary residential. That's the Missouri Baptist Children's Home. And then to the northeast, retail with some, not auto repair, but repair of landscaping equipment. Across from Lindbergh Boulevard is a mix of retail, restaurant, and other service uses. And then to the south, this is the location of the BioLife Plasma Facility. Regarding surrounding zoning, as stated, the property is Zone B2. The zoning to the west is R4, single-family dwelling. To the north, R4A, and that's specifically for the Missouri Baptist Children's Home. B4 to the northeast, and then surrounded by B2 to the east and to the south. The applicant's explanation of the proposed use was included in the packet that was distributed. The applicant is requesting to open an indoor pickleball and badminton facility using both membership-based and open to the general public. Their request is to approve this use in the 80,000-square-foot portion of the building that was shown on the site plans. 80,000-square-foot portion of the building, the western portion of the building. On review of their proposal, it is consistent with the future land use map, which shows this property as designated for commercial. There was a bit of an analysis in the report regarding traffic and parking. On review, the three entrances onto the property will be sufficient to handle the traffic. And then regarding the parking, there's currently over 400 parking spaces on this property that are striped. And with additional striping, there's room for over 500 parking spaces. So there's sufficient parking, both for daily use and any proposed tournaments. Also taken into consideration was parking for any future tenant in the eastern portion that's shown as vacant at this time, the eastern 30,000 square feet. That would take into consideration parking for any use there as well. So the site has sufficient parking. Regarding neighborhood character, there's a mix of commercial land uses to the northeast, east, and south, so this fits in there. Regarding the residential to the west, there was a comment in the report about a requirement to fill in some of the gaps to the west of the parking lot with some additional landscaping and just improve. That was discussed a little bit at the Planning Commission meeting, improve some of the landscaping. There are some, some dead trees and other dead plants in that area that, that was discussed a little bit at the Planning Commission meeting, and the applicant stated they intend to address that. I've got a summary of the recommended conditions. They were recommended by staff and taken into consideration in the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval. Just to summarize them here, the special use permit is for the operation of indoor pickleball and badminton facility in the portion of the building as depicted on the site plan, approximately 80,000 square feet, with a maximum of 30 courts. Any expansion would require an amendment to this special use permit. Second, to work with staff regarding the eastern 30,000 square feet for a potential retail tenant. A note on that, there was some mention in the report about how it's staff's opinion that the remaining portion of the building would be ideal for a retail user with its location on Lindbergh and the surrounding retail. So we intend to work with the applicant on that moving forward. A final landscaping plan shall be submitted to the Public Works Department for review and approval and address the landscaped areas to the west of the parking lot, as mentioned. And the final condition, off-street parking shall be kept free of trash and litter, pavement well-maintained and good condition, including pavement markings, and the landscape areas properly maintained. The, I do have a few images to run through quickly. Here's the, the site as it, as it currently exists. The parking lot, looking back towards the, to the north. This shows the rear portion of the building from Fifi Road. That's the northernmost entrance to the site. And this is the, that landscaped buffer on the west side along Fifi Road. And this is from, the view from across Lindbergh Boulevard. I'm, I apologize, this is a view from Fifi Road, looking back to the north. You can see more of that landscaping to the west. You can see there are some landscaping areas that need some addressing, but that did, was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting. The applicant did include their conceptual layout for courts. This was one of the layouts they included, and this is the one that shows the entire building. I do have the site plan, if we need to reference that at all for discussion, but I'll leave it at this one for any discussion. Any questions for me?
Mr. Greitens, before questions, please state to the court reporter the exhibits you'd like entered into the minutes.
Thank you. I apologize, I missed that at the beginning. So this is the list of the city's exhibits that have been marked by the court reporter. They include a copy of the report to the mayor and council from the Planning and Zoning Commission dated June 26, 2024, a copy of the staff report distributed to the Planning Commission dated June 6, 2024, a copy of the Planning Commission minutes from their June 10, 2024 meeting, a site plan of the, submitted by the applicant of the property, and by reference, ordinance number 70-25, the zoning ordinance with amendments through January 17, 2024. Thank you.
Very good. The exhibits are so entered. Thank you. Questions by council, Councilmember Sato?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad to see something's being done with this facility right down the street from me on Fifi Road here. I think this is a good addition for what's going to happen in that area. I would like to see, hopefully, that, I don't see it on their plan, but somehow that they try to tie in that there could have some food or snacks or something like that. It's not showing on there, but hopefully that can be part of their expansion to the right. When you have this many people back and forth, you kind of want to have a sit-down area to probably to socialize and do some things like that. And I don't really see that right now off here. So I think that's something they need to make sure they do. I have noticed this past couple of weeks, the Bridgeton Street Department, I guess, was there cleaning out the retention along the side for Fifi Road, doing some drainage work. Maybe that's something we have to do engineering-wise, and we have to maintain because of the Fifi Road reconstruction went into there. So maybe, you know, the street department can talk about what was done there. I just know they did a lot of back-hon and redoing the structure right there on the, on the retention on the, on that west side of the building right there. And yes, some of those trees, the top some of them are dead. I haven't seen any totally dead trees, so I think if they brought somebody in and trimmed them, the trees themselves could recuperate, because obviously with all the heat, they're just having heat stroke. So otherwise, I'm in favor of this whole project. Thank you.
Any other council members have questions of Mr. Greitens? This is Luther?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I was curious, is the, it sounds like the exterior of the building is going to remain, may have some paint or something, but that's not going to change? Correct?
Correct. The applicant did mention, and maybe they could talk about this when they come and speak, but they mentioned at the Planning Commission meeting their intent to repaint.
Okay.
No major exterior renovations, yeah.
Thank you.
I see no, no more. Thank you.
Thanks.
Would the petitioner like to come forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address to the court reporter.
Mr. Marshall Pan, 132 North Mosley Road, Creve Co.
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, I have to swear you in. Please raise your right hand. State after me. I swear to tell the truth.
I swear to tell the truth.
The whole truth?
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Mr. Mayor, council members, and everybody else, good evening. Let me start off by introducing myself. My name, of course, is Marshall Pan. My wife is Diana Fan. And I came to the U.S. in 1995, almost 30 years ago, to study for a master's degree in economics in AMSO. I didn't finish my degree in AMSO due to economic reasons. I completed the master's degree in computing and information systems in SIUE. After working for a few years, I studied and received an MBA degree from Washington University in St. Louis in 2003. After that, I started a applied diamond tools company in town that retails diamond tools for the stone fabrication industry. Diana and I have two daughters. One went to Wash U and just graduated in May. My family is deeply rooted in St. Louis and in West County. We live just 15 minutes away from here. In 2015, I started Arch Sports LLC, DBA Arch Badminton Center in Chesterfield with three other friends as a passion project. My younger daughter was being trained to play competitive badminton, and there were no dedicated indoor badminton courts at that time. We had seven badminton courts. We were operating a membership-only club, but barely breaking even. Then COVID struck. We had to close doors in early 2020, and I thought that was the end of Arch Sports. Luckily, in December 2020, thanks to a government fund from St. Louis County, we were able to reopen our business inside Chesterfield Mall with four badminton courts and three pickleball courts. We, we later added, later added another three pickleball courts due to the growing demand. We updated our name to Arch Badminton and Pickleball. In 2021, pickleball started to gain popularity nationwide. My wife and I started to play pickleball with two other friends. For almost a year, we were the only four people in Asian community playing pickleball in the mall, while our courts were more and more frequently booked by other people. Our database of pickleball and badminton players of all nationalities grew to over 7,000 during the past three years. However, Chesterfield Mall will be closed in August, and we have to, we have been searching for a property to relocate to. for a property to relocate to for more than a year. We believe this property in Bridgeton is perfect to call our new home. We are planning to open 24 pickleball courts and six badminton courts, and we'll update our name to Arch Pickleball and Badminton. I love play pickleball. I have played table tennis, basketball, and badminton, but none of them fascinated me as much as pickleball. You don't need any skill to pick up pickleball, but if you are serious, you can train and practice to become even better. It's a very fun and a social sport. Pickleball has the power to bring people with different backgrounds together. On our courts, I saw older players over 80 years old, kids having fun, high schoolers battling off their energy on weekends, families in three different generations having a good time, husband and wife playing mixed doubles, ladies leagues, guys playing at 8:00 a.m. then go to work. I saw players from all ethnicities. Again, you don't need any skill to pick up pickleball, yet players from all other sports backgrounds are converting to pickleball. The number one men's player Ben Johns was a pro table tennis player. The number one women's pickleball player Anna Lee Waters played soccer before pickleball. Tennis players like Jack Socks, Kevin Isner are playing pro pickleballs now. One of the best men's pickleball players, Tyson McGuffin, was a wrestler. Now, with six pickleball courts, we want to open and relocate to this new property to expand to 24 indoor pickleball courts. And are we worried about the business? I would say not at all. We'll look at the big picture. According to USA Pickleball, pickleball population grew 225% annually over the past three years, with over 40 million players in the U.S. alone, much more than tennis and golf players. There are over 12,000 pickleball facilities in the U.S. now, growing by the month. According to a Forbes magazine article published earlier this year, this country needs 25,000 pickleball courts now to meet the demand. Last month, my wife and I went to Las Vegas for the First World Pickleball Convention. We met and talked to many leaders in the, in the industry, chairman of USA Pickleball, CEOs from paddle manufacturers, founder of Major League Pickleball in Duper, founders of National League Pickleball, owners of MLP teams, professional players, founders of pickleball franchises, attendees were pickleball clubs like us, private country clubs, ready to add pickleball courts, insurance providers, equipment manufacturers, et cetera. This industry is just exploding. So we want to be part of it, and the city of Bridgeton can also be part of this fast-growing industry. So this property at 11333 Blake Drive is ideal for pickleball courts. It has 24-feet-high ceiling that meets the requirement for both pickleball and badminton. The column spaces are 40 feet apart for pickleball courts. The standard playing area for a pickleball court is 30 by 60. 40 feet wide will give enough room for passage and viewing. All of our 24 pickleball courts will be oversized, so will be more than 30 by 60. The facility will be air-conditioned in summer and heated in winter. We'll have the best pickleball facility in St. Louis area, and we'll have the most indoor pickleball courts in the state, and maybe in the country, at least for a while. Location-wise, the city of Bridgeton is perfect. It is most conveniently located in the greater St. Louis area as far as commuting is concerned. Our property is minutes away from the airport, close to two major highways, Page Extension, and Lindbergh Boulevard. We have a huge advantage in location compared to other indoor pickleball clubs in the region. We are central to residents in Ladue, Creve Coeur, Clayton, University City, Olivet, Maryland Heights, St. Charles, Bridgeton, and North County. With our weather-controlled, beautifully-built indoor facility, we'll bring people of all culture and ethnic backgrounds together to enjoy pickleball and badminton. So let's work together to make Arch Pickleball and Badminton a reality. Thank you.
Very good. We've got some questions for you.
Sure.
Okay, I think council member Norris was first.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pan. It sounds like you are just a very proud. We are very supportive of pickleball. We turned in some of our outside tennis courts into pickleball. I hear pickleball in my sleep, so pickleball is very, very popular in our area, so I'm very pleased that you picked Bridgeton. But I do have just a couple little questions, nothing that I'm not against, but you indicate you are remodeling the bathrooms. Since you're going, we're in the diagram, would be the bathrooms in this facility. I haven't been in there, so would it be in the back?
It's in the, on the top right corner.
That right, okay.
Yes.
Okay, alrighty. And then, since you're a club facility, are you going to provide showers and lockers?
No, we are not going to provide showers and lockers.
Okay. I just was saying you had just said something about someone coming and then going on to work, you know, doing so. I didn't know if that might be something you might be looking at later. And then in your comments, you mentioned using part of the building for, you were going to remodel, would come back for an amendment, so you're just, are you holding on to that one part of the building to see if you might want to expand? Or am I just pushing the, do you want to see what happens?
Yes, I want to see what happens. And if our business do, you know, goes really well.
At this point, you're not putting another business in there?
Not, not yet.
Okay. Is there a wall?
Yes, there's a dividing wall.
So that people wouldn't see the big open area? So there'd be a partition there?
Yes, it will be, there's a wall and the walkway to the bathroom area, we'll build a fence and covered with screen so that people don't see the empty space.
And when are you planning on opening?
Oh, it all depends on you.
Okay, I see your hours are 8 to 10, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Sunday. What is your staffing? And when you say staffing, I don't play pickleball, do you have referees or does it just on your own to say who scores?
In tournaments, of course, we'll have referees, yes.
Okay, but on a day-to-day, what's your staffing that you would have?
We plan to have at least the two, two staffs, you know, two people on staff on a, on a daily basis.
Okay.
To help checking and help, help people, and we'll have coaching, coaches.
Okay. Do you think two's going to be enough? You know, I've seen some of these people, they get kind of pretty competitive, so as I'm going to use that word, you might have to break some people up? Would you have to have any more people in there to keep them?
Yeah, sure, if necessary, I will.
I just am wondering, because I've seen them, and that's going to be a lot of people in one area, so. And also you indicated you were going to later on do a liquor license? Would that be something down the road, or are you going to do that?
We wanted very much to sell beer, you know, it's just bottled beer or canned beer.
Okay. Are you going to set up a bar area? Will you have a particular bar?
In the front entrance, checking desk area to the, to the left side, there's a big space we can use for, to put up some tables. And also there's, there's a kind of a balcony kind of thing, you know, outside of the building we can use.
Okay.
For that, for that purpose. But we probably, we'll need help in, there's like a liquor restriction.
Right.
From the Missouri Baptist Children's Home.
Exactly.
And we need to work to try to remove that restriction.
That is true.
Yeah, before we can sell.
Okay, yeah. All right, well, I'm finished, thank you so much. It sounds like it's going to be a wonderful idea. I said I like a destination that you indicated, so we, we're very proud of our city, so I'm very pleased that you're chosen to come to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No questions?
We have some more. Council member Grimmer is next.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I just want to make a comment that I'm thrilled to death with this entire concept, and particularly the badminton. And just some commentary, for about 35 years, I played competitive racquetball. In A, B, and C classes, racquetball is a fast sport, but I had guys leave racquetball to go to badminton because it's even faster. And just as a comment, you know, that little volleying the birdie across the net, that doesn't even resemble that game. Competitive badminton is something to behold, so the fact that you're bringing some courts in, I'm thrilled to death on just the whole concept, so thank you, I look forward to this.
Thank you very much.
Council member Luther?
Thank you, thank you very much. First, thank you for your thorough presentation.
You're welcome.
And I have a couple of questions. You mentioned, how many other indoor facilities are there like this one that you're proposing in the St. Louis area?
Well, I know the biggest right now is Missouri Pickleball Club with 18 courts, but they're located in Fenton.
Okay.
So far away from us.
Okay. So would this be the second one in the area then?
No, there are more.
There are more, okay.
The Padilla and Pickle was eight pickleball courts in Olivet.
Okay.
Area. And maybe, maybe the next is a Chicken and Pickle.
Yep.
They have six or eight indoor courts, but not, not as many as needed.
Right, as needed. Okay, so you answered my other question, some that are closer to us, and it sounds like the Olivet, and also the Chicken Pickle in St. Charles. And then in terms of tournaments, are those local tournaments, regional tournaments? Do you see people coming, traveling to these nationally? I'm just curious, when you talk about tournaments.
Mostly originally, maybe, yeah, but if there's opportunities, of course, we'll, we can, you know, hold national tournaments, like National League Pickleball, which is a league for older people, over 50 years old. They are looking for venues to hold, to host pickleball tournaments. So they require at least 12 courts to start the tournament. So we'll be one of the candidates for them to attract them, yeah.
And then I have one other question. So, so I imagine you're part of professional organizations? You're registered as, are you, is there a, you mentioned a couple, a national pickleball league? Are you members of a larger organization?
Not.
With your facility?
No, no.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Not at all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Westy?
Hey. First, I wanted to say thank you for such a great presentation. It's probably the best one I've seen since I started being up here, so.
Thank you.
Pickleball's a lot of fun. Badminton's even more fun. I haven't played that in years. I didn't know we even had any places in St. Louis to play it, so I think everything about this is awesome. I'm also on Ward 1, I'm less than five minutes from where you're going to be, and I absolutely love this, and I just wanted to speak real quick, saying that you have my full support behind this, and I am extremely excited to see what you're able to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and I will welcome you to come play badminton and pickleball.
Well, thank you.
Council member Norris again?
I'm sorry, I just have one more question. You know, the popularity, I see that the courts are pretty tight. Do you have people coming to watch their friends? Where would they be available to come and watch, or there won't be any room?
There are plenty of room. The aisles are designed maybe 12 feet apart, so they're wide enough for people to stand by.
For people to stand.
And all the courts will be fast, four feet high, so people can, you know, and we'll have tables and chairs along, along the fences.
Okay.
People can sit and watch.
So you won't have bleachers? Thank you, it just didn't, you know, I was just seeing how, because I've seen people sitting there and watching their friends, so I didn't know how close you were. Okay, thank you.
Council member Satell?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad this is really coming here. What I, my first question was, you heard me ask the, you know, Graytons about food. Are you going to have a snack area, some food where people can actually have food, or is it no food? Can people bring their own cooler in or something like that with some snacks?
We'll set up an area for light food, snacks, and drinks.
Okay, so you will have some kind of things, refreshments and some drinks, you know? Some people want to stay a lot longer than just one hour.
Yes.
You know, and do more than just an hour.
Definitely.
That means we're going to be, you know, wanting to have refreshments, use the bathrooms, come back and get something else to eat or something like that. So I just wanted to make sure that as you were thinking forward, you know, enough to that, that's what's needed there also, so.
Definitely, we'll, we'll design that.
Because I only live a block away from this location, you know, on Fifi Road, and grew up just two blocks to the west of that since that, you know, for the last 60 years. So I mean, I've been in this area for, I'm just, it's something that's really been needed, I think. And you might even get a lot of the people that are from the children's home right behind there, it gives them an activity to go do. I know when I was a youngster, they couldn't leave, but we went up to the children's home and played basketball and football and things like that on their facility, okay? So this might be something you can reach out to them, if there's some of them that would like to be able to, you know, have an ability to come in there, maybe during your slow times or something like that, too. Thank you.
Okay, that's a good, good suggestion, we'll, we'll reach out to them.
Anybody else? I see none. Thank you, Mr. Pan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, at this point, I want to ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to come forward and speak in favor of this special use permit? I see none. Anybody want to come forward and speak against this special use permit? Good, I see none. Okay, so the public hearing will now be closed regarding special use permit for 11333 Blake Next item on the agenda is letter J. We have one sign variance. I'm going to ask council member Luther.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I move to consider variance for a pole sign at El Morelia located at 11982 Paul Mayer Drive.
Second?
Motion's made for a sign variance for El Morelia by council member Luther, seconded by council member Luke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I see none, any discussion? Okay, any comments? Oh, council member Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. Taking a look at the, the image, I think it looks very nice as presented, and I don't have any issue with this, especially when you look, Zach or Robert, I don't know if you can go to the second page, where it talks about the actual signage allowance is over 1,100 square feet, and the total signage between these two being combined is just over 252 square feet. So I think it's still well below the total sign area allowed, and like I said, I think it looks nice, so I will vote in favor of this.
Council member Norris?
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, I, I took a drive over there, that is a big sign, and I will support this. I know they're allowed a bigger area, but I will let them put this together, I will support this. I'm just curious, why part English, part Spanish? Why, you know, I just was curious, fresh meat and produce, and then the one is bakery, and then tacos, and then that other is a machine that makes fresh tacos, but I just was wondering why they didn't do the whole sign in Spanish? Just curiosity. But I will support the, again, it is a big sign, so this could be very much allowed. And they, they have their reputation, they've been here, it's not a new, new place, I'm just pleased that they're able to expand, so they have a great following, and so I wish you good luck.
Council member Satell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm in favor of this as well, I'm just kind of curious why they didn't apply to have a sign on the backside, on the frontage on Interstate 70, like some of the other ones? Or some kind of sign on that corner sides or something like that? Is there any kind of thoughts on that, or is that something we don't worry about right Just asking about it, but that's all. Thank you.
The exception is Mrs. Luther?
Yes.
Was there any discussion regarding that?
Okay, no. So they just come back later if they chose to do something like Walmart or something like that, that stuff.
Yeah, that wasn't, I'm not aware of any.
All right, thank you.
Any further comments or questions? I see none, the clerk will call the roll on the sign variance.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to nothing, the signed variance is approved. The next item on the agenda, item K, we have no emergency legislation, contracts, or bids, so we'll move on to L, perfection of bills. Up for second reading is bill number sixty-four thirty-seven, Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for second reading of bill sixty-four thirty-seven.
Second.
Motion's made for second reading of bill number sixty-four thirty-seven by Councilmember Patel, seconded by Councilmember Grimmer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Proceed.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri repealing ordinance twenty-three dash fifty-four and adopting a new ordinance fixing the salaries and other compensation of classified employees of the city, as provided for in section eight-point-zero-four of the Charter and section one-fifteen of the Code of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri for the fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-four. Move that bill sixty-four thirty-seven become ordinance number?
Twenty-four dash twenty-four.
Second.
Motion's made that bill number sixty-four thirty-seven become ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-four by Councilmember Patel, seconded by Councilmember Sutel. Any discussion? Comments, questions? The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to nothing, bill number sixty-four thirty-seven becomes ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-four. Next item is second reading for bill number sixty-four thirty-eight.
I move for, sorry, I move for a second reading of bill sixty-four thirty-eight?
Second.
Motion's made for second reading of bill number sixty-four thirty-eight by Councilmember Westy, seconded by Councilmembers Sutel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any needs? I see none, proceed.
Thank you. Bill sixty-four thirty-eight is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached here, though, with pyro signs incorporated for the procurement and installation of a double-sided LED display sign at McKelvey Park in the amount of forty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-three dollars. I move that bill sixty-four thirty-eight become ordinance number?
Twenty-four dash twenty-five.
Second.
Second reading of bill number sixty-four thirty-eight was made by Councilmember Westy to become ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-five, seconded by Councilmember Sutel. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Luke?
Thank you, Mayor. I had called Mr. Kane today and asked if we could see some pictures, so that we would have an idea of what this looked like, and they do, they are up on the screen. Could we have Mr. Kane describe this for us?
Mr. Kane?
Yeah, so it's an LED sign, the size is roughly eight by four, eight foot wide by four foot tall. So this sign will allow staff to market our programs from our computer, you know, just like they do here, instead of going out, opening the sign, putting in the letters, and you can only do two at a time, so you get one side, you can say, now hiring, and the other side, a different program. So now you can have four, or five, six, as many programs as you want, which will be nice. These, same as the rec center sign, these signs, over time, with the sun beating down on them, they get warped, so the letters don't fit as well, they slip through the cracks, and it just, it looks, it just doesn't look great. So it'll look a lot better aesthetically, and also, we have a lot of traffic that goes by that sign, not just residents, but non-residents, we have a lot of non-residents that take part in our programs. Some are geared towards mostly residents, but we invite our, you know, different area residents, whether it's Maryland Heights, or wherever they're from, to partake in a lot of our programs, so.
Councilmember Luke, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have an idea how long these signs last?
Well, there's a five-year parks and labor warranty, but they typically last around eight to ten years, before you have to replace out some of the boards.
So this would be something that would start getting in the five-year plan for finances from parks and recs?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Norris?
I am supporting this. You know, our Parks Division, and we have multiple things that are going on at the same time, so this signage will provide this information, and, you know, that is a very well-used, you know, we have the high school, you know, of course, right now, of course, high school's not in Pratt, but there's, you know, the traffic that goes back and forth. Pattonville High School is well-used with all their activities that they have. We have Grace Church that is up on the top of the hill, so that will be a well-advertised area for us, and that property is owned by us, so, you know, we do have the control of that signage, so I am supporting this, I think it's a great future information that we have, and I hope you all support it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Westy?
Mr. Kane, just had a quick question for you on this. Is there gonna be like a GSM card inside of here to where they can update it remotely from wherever, or is it something that we're gonna have to have a staff member actually go out and interface via Bluetooth, USB, whatever, to update the sign?
Yeah, we'll be able to do it from the offices at the rec center.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Sutel?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Earlier, we had a comment saying we have about one percent of our citizens go by this, I totally disagree with that. I think the citizens of Bridgeton that live on the whole complete south side of seventy drive by this location at least once a week, when you look at what it takes to go to DePaul Hospital, or what it takes to go to any of the shopping strips along there. McKelvey Road is very well-used, along with Old St. Charles, but also Fifi, and most of its residents in this area of Bridgeton also look at trying to avoid the traffic on St. Charles Rock Road, to use McKelvey as a more economical shortcut, without having to stop at all to stop lights on the Rock Road, but there is a lot of stop signs on Old St. Charles. So it's not as, you know, for the exit of your trip, it just basically does not interfere with, so, plus the addition of having all the Maryland Heights people and the Pattonville people, I think this is a really great location to put this sign, and I think it's gonna be well-used. The city of Maryland Heights uses one down there at Vago Park, and they change things all the time. Hopefully, this one's a lot clearer than, you know, than the ones that's down there at Vago Park, it's kinda just off, and there's speckles on it, it's not real, real clear, but maybe it's just newer technology comes out better for the boards, and maybe ten years from now, it'll be clearer than it is today, so I'm looking forward to this, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? I see none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to nothing, bill number sixty-four thirty-eight becomes ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-five. Next item on the agenda, M, consideration of new bills. First is bill number sixty-four thirty-nine, Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion for the first reading of bill sixty-four thirty-nine?
Second.
Motion's made for first reading of bill number sixty-four thirty-nine by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none, proceed.
Thank you. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, application number twenty-four dash PZ dash zero-four, establishing a special use permit for a physical culture establishment to allow an indoor pickleball and badminton facility located at one-one-three-three-three Blake Drive. Move to table, bill sixty-four thirty-nine.
Second.
Motion made to move bill number sixty-four thirty-nine to table by Councilmember Luke, seconded by Councilmember Luther. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none, the bill is tabled. Next is bill number sixty-four forty, I'm gonna refer to Councilmember Westy.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for first reading of bill sixty-four forty?
Second.
Motion made for first reading of bill number sixty-four forty by Councilmember Westy, seconded by Councilmember Sutel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none, proceed.
Bill sixty-four forty is an ordinance to authorize the mayor and city council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, to agree to receive funds through the Missouri Department of Transportation, using eighty percent, which is eighty-two thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents, federal grant funds, and twenty percent, which is twenty thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars and forty cents of city funds, which is a local match, that will, that the Bridgeton Parks and Recreation Department will expend to purchase a senior transportation vehicle. I move to suspend council rules and allow for second reading, bill sixty-four forty.
Second.
Okay, motions made to suspend council rules for second reading of bill number sixty-four forty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none, proceed.
I move for a second reading of bill sixty-four forty.
Second.
Motion made for second reading of bill number sixty-four forty by Councilmember Westy, seconded by Councilmember Sutel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none, proceed.
Bill sixty-four forty is an ordinance to authorize the mayor and city council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, to agree to receive funds through the Missouri Department of Transportation, using eighty percent, which is eighty-two thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty cents, federal grant funds, and twenty percent, which is twenty thousand six hundred twenty-two dollars and forty cents of city funds, which are local matched, that the Bridgeton Parks and Recreation Department will expend to purchase a senior transportation vehicle. I move that bill sixty-four forty become ordinance number?
Twenty-four dash twenty-six.
Second.
Motion is made that bill number sixty-four forty become ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call, booth.
Councilmember Patel?
Aye.
Councilmember Sutel?
Aye.
Councilmember Westy?
Aye.
Councilmember Grimmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Hood?
Aye.
Councilmember Luke?
Aye.
Councilmember Luther?
Aye.
Councilmember Norris?
Aye.
By a vote of eight to nothing, bill number sixty-four forty becomes ordinance twenty-four dash twenty-six. Next item is bill number sixty-four forty-one, for first consideration, Councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of bill number sixty-four forty-one.
Second.
Motion's made for first reading of bill number sixty-four forty-one by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none, proceed.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a consent for entry and access to property substantially in the form attached hereto as Exhibit A, between the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, and the Westlake landfill OU dash one and OU dash three respondents in order for the Westlake landfill OU dash one and OU dash three respondents to access the property, as more particularly described in the agreement. Move to table, bill six-four four-one.
Second.
Motion's made to table bill number sixty-four forty-one by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. It's tabled. Next item is bill number sixty-four forty-two, for first consideration, Councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of bill number sixty-four forty-two?
Second.
Motion's made for first reading of bill number sixty-four forty-two by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none, proceed.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached hereto, with Ford Asphalt Company, Inc., for the resurfacing project on Falcon Avenue, in an amount of ninety-nine thousand dollars and zeros, with a contingency in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Move to table, bill number sixty-four forty-two?
Second.
Motion made to bill number sixty-four forty-two by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none, bill number sixty-four forty-two is tabled. Next item is bill number sixty-four forty-three, for first consideration, again, Councilmember Luther.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of bill number sixty-four forty-three?
Second.
Motion's made for first reading of bill number sixty-four forty-three by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none, proceed.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a contract substantially in the form attached hereto, between the City of Bridgeton and St. Louis County, wherein St. Louis County agrees to provide for vector control services, including mosquito control services and rodent abatement services, to be performed in the City of Bridgeton. Move to table, bill number sixty-four forty-three?
Second.
Motion made to table bill number sixty-four forty-three by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none, bill number sixty-four forty-three is tabled. Next item is bill number sixty-four forty-four, for first consideration, Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of bill sixty-four forty-four?
Second.
Motion's made by Councilmember Patel for first reading of bill number sixty-four forty-four, seconded by Councilmember Grimmer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none, proceed.
An ordinance of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, amending chapter one-fifteen, article eight, section one-fifteen point two-eight-zero, holidays to add Juneteenth Independence Day. Move to table, bill sixty-four forty-four.
Motion, motions made by Councilmember Patel to table bill number sixty-four forty-four, seconded by Councilmember Grimmer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none, bill number sixty-four forty-four is tabled. Next item, bill number sixty-four forty-five, for first consideration, Councilmember Patel again.
Thank you, Mayor. Move for first reading of bill sixty-four forty-five?
Second.
Motion's made for first reading of bill number sixty-four forty-five by Councilmember Patel, seconded by Councilmember Grimmer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none, proceed.
An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Bridgeton, Missouri, amending article eight, section one-fifteen point two-eight-zero of the city code, and amending the number of personal hours allocated to employees. Move to table, bill sixty-four forty-five?
Second.
Second.
Motion made to table Bill Number 6445 by Councilmember Patel, seconded by Councilmember Sutel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Bill Number 6445 is tabled. The next three bills, 6446, 6447, 6448, were tabled earlier at the agenda approval, so we're moving on to the next item. Bill Number 6449, for first consideration, Councilmember Luther.
Move for first reading of Bill Number 6449.
Second.
Motion's made for first reading of Bill Number 6449 by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. Proceed.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Bridgeton, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement substantially in the form attached heretofu with the Davenport Group for the new business license and permitting software known as LAMA, in an amount of one-hundred-twenty-nine thousand dollars. Move to table, Bill 6449.
Second.
Motion's made to table Bill Number 6449 by Councilmember Luther, seconded by Councilmember Luke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. Bill Number 6449 is tabled. Next item, we have no discussion items, so the next item, oh, attorneys report.
I have nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, P, Council Communications. Let me start with Councilmember Grimmer tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just wanted to mention, I had the occasion to, uh, take a couple of my, uh, ransoms on to, uh, the BMAC facility the other evening, last evening, and, uh, got to witness my co-council's, uh, talented son, make a, a nice single up, uh, up the right side, left side, excuse me, so, just wanted to, again, I brag a lot about how great the city is. The BMAC facility is a prime example of that. That, I haven't been to every, uh, athletic facility in the Midwest, but I've ventured to say that it is among the absolute finest. The maintenance, the, the way things are done down there, uh, the construction, the continual upgrading, uh, of that facility, uh, and just consider the thousands and thousands of hours of enjoyment, uh, that that's, that facility has allowed, uh, for folks, all, not just here in, in, in our city, in our neighboring cities, but the entire Midwest. It's one of the best, and I'm very proud to be associated with the fact that that is Bridgeton's own. So, again, it's one of these things that's probably underappreciated, but we are indeed very fortunate to have that. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Councilmember Patel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanna wish everybody a safe holiday, and hopefully it doesn't rain tomorrow, which I think it is, but I hope it doesn't. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Sutel.
Well, thank you, Mayor. As an irrigation guy, we do appreciate some rain every once in a while as well, though, so thank you very much. That we got what we got this morning, we're like inch and a half, inch and a three-quarters or something like that, almost two. Anyway, I got two items I wanna talk about. One, uh, I brought this up previous years, and we probably get somebody else, is, is the tall weeds and grass and the limbs that are growing through the fence along, a long road right there. It's the outer road between that and the highway. Uh, previous years, a couple of citizens have been complaining to me about it down through there. It goes down, railin' down to, uh, to the turnaround right there at the bottom, but if you know, a long, long road touches the highway. And it, it looks bad from both sides, the Lindbergh side and the Long Road side. Uh, so maybe we can figure out how to get that taken care of. I don't know if that's through Bridgeton or if it's through MoDOT, so maybe it's a joint effort. Uh, the other issue, we, I love that they have the, the signs posted up there for the no fireworks, they came up nice and early this year. But, uh, the issue I'm hearing a lot, and maybe this is more of a police issue, uh, where I live on Fifi, I back up to Lindbergh, it sounds like there's a lot of vehicles that can automatically adjust their, their timing on their car, to start backfiring exactly what they want, and it sounds like shotguns or multiple shots going down, down Lindbergh or Fifi. So, maybe we can create something that stops that kinda noise. I mean, it sounds like, you know, like there's a gunshot or a shot, you know, going down, drive-by shootings or something like that, but maybe the police chief can bring that up, and something we can, is it an ordinance we gotta pass to do something about that? If there isn't, what can we do about it? I wanna find out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Westy.
Um, I, I don't know if this was Bridgerton's doing or St. Louis County's doing, but I noticed a couple days ago that, uh, the grass at Lindbergh and Whitehall Manor, uh, was all nicely cut and weeded and everything, and it really made that area look a lot better. So, yeah, if that was you guys, thank you. If it was somebody else, thank them. Um, and, uh, hoping that we don't have, uh, rain ruin events for tomorrow, uh, because, Mayor, I am personally hoping that you continue the tradition that started last year of leading us in singing the National Anthem, so if I get a second for that, uh, there we go, we got a second right there, so, that's all. Thank you very much.
That's the mayor's job.
Councilmember Luther.
Well, uh, parade and fireworks. I work at a seminary, and I'll put some prayers in for you tomorrow, for all of us tomorrow. Uh, that's a lot of work and a lot of hustle, so thank you for that. A lot of hustle. Uh, plus, I've got ninety pounds of candy. I don't know what I'm gonna do with it. Just throw it at people. Uh, all, so, I, you know, I think pickleball, the club that's coming in, I think, uh, I think is wonderful. I think the potential for bringing other people into Bridgeton, uh, I've heard people say, "New, new. We need new things in Bridgeton, new buildings," and I think, uh, what about the buildings that we already have? And what about repurposing them in a wonderful way? And I think this is a terrific example of that, so, uh, and I was really impressed with the presentation, so I wish them well, and I look forward to ribbon-cutting there, maybe, soon. Uh, I wanted to mention, uh, Captain Wooton's retirement. He looked pretty happy when I saw him. Uh, what a, what a service to the, our community, so, good luck. I hope he has fun things planned. Uh, it was, it was a pleasure to be there, so, thank you. I also wanted to comment on the Historical Commission's, uh, project, which is unbelievable. They did a lot of, uh, that's a tremendous amount. Oral histories are amazing, and who knows where we might be able to use that. So, kudos to Judy and Kathy. My goodness, that's a lot of work and dedication for our city. Uh, I also wanna take a moment to thank everybody who's here, and in particular, public works staff and our ordinance enforcement officer, for helping to keep our city hospitable, welcoming, and nicely maintained. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Luke.
Thank you, Mayor. We live in an absolutely wonderful community. I am so happy to be here. Um, first, a very heartfelt thank you to the Public Works Department, specifically, uh, Brian Peterson and Matt Elliott, for going above and beyond to help a resident recently. She's very, very, very pleased, and I think that is done. Um, also, thank you to the Parks Department for making an early decision on the parade, for planning purposes. Um, I get to sleep in an extra hour, I'm kinda happy about that, especially since we're here later tonight. Um, like Councilmember Luther said, I don't know what I would do with over forty-one-hundred pieces of candy. I don't think I'd get that many trick-or-treaters for Halloween. Um, thank you to Mrs. Robinson for the report you provided on what the other cities have for their holidays and floating holidays, that type of information. I did ask for financial-related information related to this change, um, so I'm looking forward to receiving that prior to our decision. I am in no way right now stating any type of opinion or how I feel about it or anything, um, but I did ask for what the cost impact of, is of making this decision, and I'm also curious, and again, not giving any opinion whatsoever, just asking for the information, what is the cost to the city to add a holiday? Instead of removing a floating holiday to make a designated holiday, what is the cost to add a holiday? And part of the reason why I asked that is because the federal government at any time can add additional holidays. So, at some point down the road, will the city of Bridgeton be adding additional holidays? So, just kind of as a baseline, I'm curious what that cost is. So, if I get that information prior to our vote as well, that would be helpful. Thank you. And then, um, speaking to the Historical Commission, I did watch Mayor Briggs' interview, um, after his services, and it was, it was well worth the watch. It really gave an insight into who Terry was and how consistent he was as a wonderful human being, so if you have an opportunity to go watch it, please do so, it's very well worth it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Norris.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I also attended the retirement of Police Captain Steve Wooton. He served our community for thirty-five years. His dedication, loyalty, devotion to our residents and business community. I wanna thank him again, uh, for serving and protecting the city of Bridgeton. Uh, and I also wanna thank Officer Dean. I said, yes, um, some of our residents do need to be reminded of, uh, some of our ordinances, so I do appreciate you, uh, giving them their gentle reminder. Um, also, um, and I know this is really, but it was on the quest, I know this is a stupid question, but there's no stupid question. What is a pallet racking? Um, I know it sees, there's two businesses over that's been added, so what do they do? Do they sell pallets, or do they store pallets for other businesses? If, Robert, you could explain that to me, I, just another little bit of knowledge I would like to have. Uh, and also, I'm praying, uh, I'm glad we can get the parade in. I also have like a half a ton of candy, so I sure don't wanna keep it. Uh, I go, I, you know, uh, the poor kids, that, they, we, we need to keep those dentists in business. Um, and I am so pleased about our, that racket ball, but we do have to check that. I know, um, I don't know if he's gonna have a problem with the liquor license because of that ownership with the children's home, so I hope that can get cleared up for him, because I think that would be a great advantage for him. Um, so, and also, I don't know if we're gonna get to see that Fourth of July, but I sure, um, I, I hope so, but the weather sure didn't look so good. Uh, but happy Fourth, whatever we do, um, be safe. Thank you.
Councilmember Hood.
Thank you. Well, I wanna congratulate Joel on his accomplishment. That's, that's quite an ordeal. We worked together for many years, and I know his heart is truly in the right place when it comes to taking care of these animals. And it's quite an accomplishment to only lose just a couple out of that many animals. So, it's, uh, his dedication and hard work that makes things like that happen. And, uh, I wanna congratulate Steve again on his retirement. He did a great job for the city, and I hope he has a long and happy life after that. And can somebody tell me if pickleball is harder than golf?
You only have as many things, iron things.
Is that it?
That's it.
Staff reports. I'll go ahead and start with, uh, Brendan Kane from Parks, and would you explain, uh, the, uh, National Anthem? Who's gonna be singing that also? Thank you.
Pickleball is easier than golf. That's, that's a fact. Pickleball is easier than golf, for sure. Um, as we all know, the, the parade has been pushed back to eleven AM tomorrow. Uh, originally, it's supposed to be ten AM. After looking at the weather forecast today, uh, we decided to push it back a little, a little bit, so I think we've got a good window there to, to stay relatively dry. So, everything that, that you knew before, push it back an hour, as far as where you need to be, and, uh, the council for being in your spots tomorrow, just to ha, uh, ten-thirty, um, will be good. Staff will be meeting first thing in the morning to get an update on the weather forecasts as far as the fireworks. Um, as of today, it didn't look great, but you never know, within, you know, another sixteen hours, it could all, you know, blow a different direction, so, uh, we'll make that decision first thing in the morning, and hopefully have something out, you know, pretty, pretty soon, and let everybody know. We've got everything posted right now, um, on our Facebook page and, and the city website as well, so, if you know anybody, please pass that along. Thank you, council, for supporting the lifeguard salary increase. That's gonna really help us out, retain the staff that we have now, and continue to recruit new lifeguards, um, to get back up to, up to being fully staffed, uh, as well as the senior van ordinance, so we can get that ordered, uh, ASAP. What was the question, Mayor?
The National Anthem.
National Anthem, okay. Uh, we have a, an employee, a part-time employee, works in the fitness center, uh, his name's Colin Ford. He is the lead singer of a band called the Ford Rangers, and, uh, he has, uh, the, the bands won't sing it, for some reason, that they, they refuse to do it. So, um, so he's gonna sing it, unless, okay.
Turn the mics off.
He, he's excited to do it. Hopefully, we get to see it, along with the, with the fireworks, but we'll, we'll find out in the morning.
Thank you. Um, let me skip over to Public Works. Robert Gunn.
All right, I'll keep it short. Pallet racking is just a metal structure that's set up by, let's say, a warehouse or distributor, that they can put and store a lot of material. The reason why it's a big deal is a lot of times, people tend to go cheap on this, they don't anchor it properly, so if you're putting material, let's say, a couple thousand pounds up in the air about ten feet, all of a sudden, that gets very dangerous, so, it's something that we take pretty serious, and we make sure everything's done properly. And that's all I have.
Any questions? Chief Masadi?
Okay, just, uh, wanted to address the, uh, question from Councilmember Sutel. Um, as far as ordinances are concerned, we have noise ordinances, loud vehicle noise ordinances, firework ordinances, and firearms discharge ordinances, so, uh, just encourage the residents, if they have a problem with, uh, those kinda sounds coming, the police call us, and then we'll respond and try to determine the, the cause of it and address those on an individual basis, so, uh, just have 'em call us. Uh, I don't have anything else to report. I, um, hoping for a positive outcome tomorrow with the weather, but if that doesn't happen, uh, all of you have a very, uh, happy Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Bookout.
Regarding the, uh, request by Councilmember Luke, that, um, the additional holiday and the cost on that, we had put some of that information together last year, so we'll, we'll pull that and get it to the council before the next council meet. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The mayor's report. Uh, Councilmember Sutel mentioned long road and the vegetation overgrowth there. Um, Mr. Gunn, uh, knows, and I'm, I'm not sure if I sent this to you also, Mr. Bookout, but I did reach out to the MoDOT area engineer for North County yesterday via email, and, uh, approached her with, uh, three things. I see a problem here in Bridgeton with MoDOT, and, uh, part of that was some vegetation overgrowth in other areas, so she said she would take a look at it and address it and get back to me. Uh, we have some residents on Avery and also on Locks, uh, two residents on Locks that are getting overgrowth from, uh, the MoDOT, um, exit ramp there, uh, coming off of Seventy Going West on St. Charles Rock Road. Happy Fourth of July to everybody. Um, I too attended Officer Wooton's retirement celebration at Sports Cafe last Friday. Um, what I would like to do with council approval is, um, put together a proclamation, um, for Steve, and I'll get together with, uh, Chief Masadi and Mr. Bookout, and we[1680.32]